There you go.
Good morning, everyone. I'll call this regular meeting of the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees to order. We are meeting and communicating via Zoom video today due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we welcome everyone here. We appreciate those that are viewing this from all parts of the state and other areas. And we appreciate your interest in our system. We thank everyone for the staff, the chancellor, and board members and contributions that brought this meeting together. At this time, it's my pleasure to recognize Pastor Hardy Sellers, who is with Von Forest Church in Montgomery. Pastor Sellers will be giving our invocation and word of encouragement to us today. Pastor Sellers.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for the invitation. I'm honored to have been asked. Like Al said, I'm the administrative pastor at Von Forest Church, a position I've held for the past 21 years. I had a great conversation with Al yesterday, learning a little bit more about ATCS, as well as the great things he had to say about the other board members and about the board and just how unified you guys are. And he was very complimentary on you, which is always a good start. And I just wanted some of the things that we talked about in as far as encouragement, you all know this information, but we're in a pivotal time in our country. But post-secondary education is in the middle of the debate. And as I was speaking to Mr. Thompson yesterday, I think community colleges have an incredible opportunity. Just some of the stats, traditional colleges' costs are rising on average 8% a year. So I mean, from the time a child is born until they are college age, college cost rises at 400%. And as we all know, that's just not sustainable. Over 45 million people owe $1.6 trillion in student loan debt. And that debt is second only to mortgage debt in this country. 41% of recent college graduates are employed in businesses not even requiring a college education. And most of y'all saw this week where Harvard University announced that for 2020, '21, all classes will be held online. And many other colleges, the majority of classes will be held online. All of these are, in my opinion, terrible statistics and issues that need to be dealt with. However, it has created an incredible opportunity for community colleges around the country. But between the pandemic and more college students living at home, the downturn in the economy, and just the return on investment, more and more people are turning to community colleges. So while I was looking at your website, y'all are currently at 168,000 students who are with ATCS each year through your 24 community and technical colleges. That is going to grow. And you and your organization need to be ready for that. And what that means for this board is a lot of people are depending on you. So my goal here is to encourage you. I want to challenge you, and I also want to pray for you. The verses I have for you, the first I'm going to read is Psalm 133, one of my favorite verses. And it's verse 1 and a little bit of verse 3. It says, "Behold how good and pleasant it is when brothers dwell in unity, for there the Lord has commanded his blessing." So unity is a huge thing. And when I talked to Al yesterday, he just talked about the unity that this board has. And I firm believe where there is unity with God's purpose, he does command his blessings. James 3, verses 13 and 17, talks about wisdom. It says, "Who is wise in understanding among you? Let them show it by their good life, by deeds done, and the humility that comes from wisdom." Verse 17 says, "But the wisdom that comes from heaven is first of all pure, then peace-loving, considerate, submissive, full of mercy, and good fruit, impartial, and sincere." And I think those are all great goals and aspirations. Four goals, as y'all are making decisions for a lot of people all around the state. And so I want to pray for you guys as you go about doing your meeting today and pray for the Lord's blessings. So if you could pray with me. Lord, we come to you this morning acknowledging you as our Creator, our Provider, and our Sustainer. We submit to you and your leadership. And Lord, I lift up the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System. I pray you take the truth from desiring people and form something special. I pray for unity amongst them and for your blessing to be evident. I pray you grant them wisdom as they make decisions affecting thousands of students around our state. I pray you make it clear your path for this organization. I pray you open wide the doors you want them to walk through. And I pray you slam shut the ones that you don't. And I pray that you will keep them humble in the success you grant them, all for your glory. And Lord, we also especially want to lift up Jeffy this morning for his surgery. Lord, I pray for his healing. I pray for a quick recovery. And we pray all this in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Sellers. You honor us with your presence and your great words of encouragement. Thank you so much.
You're very -- my pleasure. Lord bless him.
Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Good morning, board. Mr. Al Thompson.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Susan Foy.
Present.
Mr. Matthew Woods.
Present.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Present.
Mr. Jeffrey Newman. Governor Kay Ivey. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of today's agenda. The board members received these well in advance of today's meeting and have a chance to review this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion from Milton.
Motion from Mr. Davis is their second.
Second.
Second for Mr. McAnally. Any discussion changes to the minutes? I'm sorry, agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. And if you'll call the roll, all those in favor of approving the minute, I mean, the agenda as presented, please say yes.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
John's muted.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Susan -- okay. Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
I see passes unanimously. The agenda's approved. Item five is the approval of the minutes for last regular meeting, which was June 10th, 2020. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the minutes of June 10th, 2020? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Item six, public comment. Is anyone signed up for a public comment?
No one has signed up.
New business? Item seven, A, election of board officers. First, we have election of the board chair for the coming year. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations.
Yes, Chairman Thompson, I'd like to nominate Mr. Al Thompson for chairman of the board for the upcoming year.
Al Thompson's nominated. This does not require a second. Any other nominations for chairman? If there are no other nominations, I'll close the nominations. At this time, we have one person nominated, Al Thompson, for chair. If you'll just go down the roll, please, Ms. Hibley, and get a yes or no.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
To confirm, Mr. Thompson voted yes. Mr. John Mitchell voted yes. Ms. Susan Foy voted yes. Mr. Matthew Woods voted yes. Ms. Crystal Brown voted yes. Mr. Milton Davis voted yes. Mr. Chuck Smith voted yes. And Mr. Blake McAnally voted yes.
By that count, Al Thompson is elected chair. Item 7A2, election of vice chairman. Floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Milton Davis.
Mr. Smith nominates Milton Davis. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. We have Milton Davis nominated for vice chairman. Please call the roll, Ms. Hibley.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
To confirm, Mr. Thompson voted yes. Mr. John Mitchell voted yes. Ms. Susan Foy voted yes. Mr. Matthew Woods voted yes. Ms. Crystal Brown voted yes. Mr. Milton Davis voted yes. Mr. Chuck Smith voted yes. Mr. Blake McAnally voted yes.
Milton Davis is elected vice chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
We'll move to section eight, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, physical information technology, and workforce development. Eight, A1, is the allocation of 19 industry certification funds for the Alabama Community College System. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion from Milton.
Motion from Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Brown. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion, item passes. Item eight, A2, is renovations to the Opelika Administration Building, Southern Union State Community College. I'll entertain a motion on this.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Foy is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of the renovations to the Opelika Administration Building at Southern Union State Community College.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
He's muted.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, you vote yes?
It looks like Mr. Smith is -- oh, it looks like he's having some kind of issue. There he is.
Yeah, thank you. Motion carries. Item eight, A3, is the purchase of equipment in connection with the Alamat Grant for Bishop State Community College, Calhoun.
I'm having internet -- I'm having internet problems, so I'm in and out.
Northwest Shoals, Community College, Wallace, Community College, Hansville. At this time, I will entertain a motion on item eight, A3.
Motion from Milton.
Motion from Mr. Davis is their second. Second by Mr. Woods. Is that correct, Mr. Woods? You're muted, by the way. But I saw you. I saw you. I'm reading lips right now.
That's correct.
Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of the purchase of equipment in connection with Alamat Grant for Bishop State, Calhoun Community College, Northwest Shoals, Wallace, Community College, Hansville.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Section nine, executive legal and public information. Item nine, A1, is adoption of changes for policy 520.01 for the Alabama Community College System. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion with an edit to the policy name. I fail to notice that it should say purchase, sell, or acceptance of real property.
Okay. Is Mr. O'Brien on?
I am, sir.
Mr. O'Brien, should this -- can this motion be made in this manner? Or does it need to be amended? Is it an amended motion? Not amended because it's the original motion. How should this be stated?
It can be made in the manner that Ms. Brown has offered. Simply the change in the name of the policy itself and not the terms of the policy.
We have a motion by Ms. Brown, Chair of the Policy Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion. Questions?
I'd just like to thank the Policy Committee again and also our Facilities Committee for all the work on this. It's a good move forward. Thank you.
All good work. Appreciate everybody's time and commitment to this. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of adoption of policy 520.01?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine, A2, recommendation regarding adoption of revised policy 316.01 concerning travel for the Alabama Community College System. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion.
Now, that motion was by Crystal.
Ms. Brown? I'm sorry. I said Ms. Brown. Forgive me. I was looking right at her. Motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. We'll move to a vote.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, item nine, A3, recommendation regarding revision of policy 709.01, international education experience policy for the Alabama Community College System. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion from Milton.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Woods. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith? Mr. Chuck Smith? Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine, A4, request to execute the lease amendment, number three, between Gaston State Community College and the U.S. Department of Labor. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods is their second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Foy. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine, A5, purchase of real property for Chattahoochee Valley Community College. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion from Milton.
Motion.
Second from Susan.
Second by Ms. Foy. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Ms. Hibley?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine, A6, is the recommendation to purchase property for Coastal Alabama Community College. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Woods is their second.
Second from Milton.
Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Please call the roll, Ms. Hibley.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10, personnel.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'd like to tell you is we have been up and down and in and out around this building. And I know this isn't the kind of personnel report I normally would give, but I just want to let you know that we have had a serious level of dedication of our people working through this whole pandemic situation. I pointed out earlier, our IT staff, people are having to be quarantined in different kind of occurrences. But they have done it, yeoman's task, in working and continue to work from home to get the job done. It's been somewhat, I would say, difficult on everyone. Anxiety has been an issue, of course. But just from the standpoint of the dedication of our staff as well as at the colleges. And I don't want to miss this because we've been doing a lot of things that we had planned to do in a normal environment, but we've gone ahead and those things have happened. And I just want to say how much we appreciate that. I want the board to know how effective the faculties and the staffs at the colleges and here has functioned. With that, that's my personnel report.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Item 11, are there any committee reports? Any board committee reports? Item 12, Chancellor's report.
I've got several items that I wanted, and I asked some of the group, some of the staff, to be here in the room, that I just felt a need to let you know about what's going on in a report. A lot of it's very positive, but it's just some things that we need to discuss with the board. So that being, I think, why don't you cover it first? It'll be pretty short.
Get a little closer to the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. I just gave a brief update on our go-live process with the Cohort Two and the Banner project that we've been involved in. All 15 cohort schools, two schools are using Banner now for finance, HR, and for some student registrations. That process is ongoing for the next several days. But right now, we have 17 of the 24 schools that have actively registered students in the ERP, the new ERP system. Account payable checks are being cut today for the first time with Cohort Two. Account payable checks are being cut today for the first time with Cohort Two schools. Everything is progressing and moving forward. We've had some minor bumps on the road with integration with some other partners like TouchNet or Payment Gateway Provider, or we had difficulty at one campus provisioning student accounts. But overall, it's been very positive. The team has been working very hard. The schools have been working very hard to address any issues that have popped up and moved forward. And I just want to say that the the staff, IT staff, student staff, faculty at the schools have done a phenomenal job through the pandemic and all the other challenges we faced this year, overcoming a huge number of obstacles to hit these targeted dates and times. And I mean, they did an awesome job. There's not another way to say that. They did amazing work going together and continuing to move this forward and support that. And the same with the staff at the Cohort One schools that supported all these efforts. And enrollment numbers, as of this morning AM, we had 15,831 students registered for the fall term. While that's not where we will, close to where we finish up for this early in the registration cycle, that is actually a very good number given that registrations did.
We're losing Ben's audio.
Oh, sorry about that. That's probably me stepping away from the phone. So we are, we are at almost 16,000 students registered in the ERP system as of nine o'clock this morning. So it's been a positive outcome. I mean, it's, I don't know, I don't know what else to say other than it's going as well as it, I think, as it can go, given all the challenges we face this year. So if you have any questions, please.
I just wanted you to know that the pandemic situation, we didn't change our goal and we've moved forward. And the staff has responded very positively to that at the schools as well as here. And we are basically operating with one system with a few minor exceptions. And those will be cured over the next month or maybe six weeks. So I think it's something that we ought to be proud of. And it's been a serious undertaking. And I just wanted the board to know where we are in terms of the overall program. Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of news coverage on the coronavirus situation. And our kind of internal, not kind of, is, our internal go-to person is our health science specialist. And you've heard from Kenneth before, but Kenneth Kirkland, I've asked him to kind of review several things, at least one in particular. And I want him, I want him to make it clear about some of the things because, you know, everything you see in the press may not be the way it really ends up. There was an announcement with the contract with UAB between the Finance Department, the Governor's Office, and UAB. One would have, if they had read the press or heard the press release, you would have made an assumption that you're going, there's going to be a massive amount of testing of all students coming onto any college campus. I want Kenneth, if you will, to bring this forward and bring us up to date so the board. And we've already reviewed this with the presidents yesterday. But I just felt like it's important for you to understand this whole project.
Thank you, Chancellor. Mister Chairman, members of the board, good morning. If you're not able to hear me, if you'll let me know, I'll try and speak a little louder. Is the chancellor mentioned, the press release that went out mentions a program called Testing for Alabama. This represents a coalition between UAB and ADPH. And it mentions UAB despite mentioning two-year colleges because UAB is serving as the fiscal agent for the housing of those $30 million of CARES Act funds that is allocated for this effort. This is a statewide effort to provide the opportunity for COVID testing to all two-year and four-year credit-seeking students. And so, you know, I would like to just say that, you know, system-wide testing is not a silver bullet to COVID and that this is in addition to the very strenuous efforts of our colleges to maintain safe distancing and some of those safety and health protocols that they're implementing in their fall operations plans. So this does not negate those fall operation plans. This is something that I would almost view as another simultaneous project kind of running side by side at the same time. However, because it is statewide, we're reviewing this as a system-wide effort and have asked the colleges that any communications be routed through the system office to ensure that if it affects one, it will most likely affect others. And so we can ensure that messaging going out to the colleges is consistent. And so like anything else with COVID, as you've been brought up to date before, it does change and evolve sometimes on a daily basis and sometimes on a weekly basis as well. And so as these details continue to become more finite, our colleges will receive some more up-to-date instructions as we move forward. But if you have any questions for me, this concludes a kind of a brief update on that. I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Let me ask. Regardless of what interpretation might have been made by the press, there is no program at this point to test every student that walks on the campus.
The strongest limitation to testing for Alabama is that even from a four-year perspective, it would, it is highly unreasonable to suspect that every student returning in the fall would receive a COVID test. And so most of those efforts have focused to those in residential housing at this time.
Where are these test sites located?
So Testing for Alabama utilizes third-party sources. And those third-party sources are based off of zip code. And so in our conversations with UAB, we are providing zip codes to the residential housing campuses and instructional sites for those colleges because, as you may be aware, those of the residential housing often have sometimes the greatest challenges in meeting transportation issues.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Really, we are now still depending on the plans that the schools themselves have developed for each individual school. And they've worked diligently on that. We're depending on that. This is just maybe something that can be helpful in some particular situations, primarily in housing.
Thank you all for doing this because in the rural part of the state, people are having to drive 30 and 40 miles just to get tested. So it is a challenge in rural Alabama. So thank you all for supplying opportunities to where it should go.
The next item I wanted to cover, we spent six days, one in each of, two days in each of the three regions of the state, north, central, and south. In that, those days, every college was represented. Almost all of the presidents, there was a couple of occasions where there was a conflict, but the president, along with several of their staff members, attended the meetings, at which time we reviewed the program that we're calling Aspire 2030. And I've asked Vicki if she will review that for you. I know there's been some communication to you. And in addition, we have mailed out a copy of the document that we gave to all the presidents. You should be receiving that this week. It's already been mailed. So if you will, Vicki.
Good morning, everybody. I am in the room with the chancellor. I'm just out of view of the camera. It's good to be with you all. Thank you for giving me the opportunity this morning to present on ACCS Aspire 2030. And we do have some slides for you to see on this presentation. And I believe that they should be showing up on your screens right about now.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. ACCS Aspire 2030, the word aspire stands for Achieving System-Wide Potential Through Increased Resources and Engagement. And that name, aspire, and that acronym adequately describes what we're trying to do with Aspire 2030. As you know, in the fall, we are anticipating some capital improvement bond money to be released. And we should be able to take advantage of that money in the Alabama Community College system. And we're starting now to plan for that. And Chancellor Baker and his staff have designed a process for the colleges to engage in to submit proposals for funding for this money. And Aspire 2030 is about looking forward to the year 2030 and envisioning what our colleges are going to look like, what programs we're going to be offering, what services we needed to be offering to our students, how we need to be doing that, what technology should be involved, just the whole comprehensive view of the institution. And we'll go to the next slide. So what is Aspire 2030? Well, first of all, it's an opportunity for the colleges to dream big, to look forward to 2030 and envision what their institution will look like. So they will be doing some strategic planning as part of the aspire initiative and thinking about what changes they need to make on their institutions to more effectively engage the community and serve their community. And as part of this process, they will be engaging community members in the strategic planning. They will be inviting people from business and industry, from local government, from nonprofits, from the school systems. All of the stakeholders for the colleges will be engaged in this process with them. And in the end, they will submit proposals for funding for capital improvement projects on their campus. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So this process is going through two phases. And in phase one, the colleges will conduct a self-evaluation or self-analysis. And they will complete a 50-question review of their institution. And those 50 questions that they will answer come from these areas, about the strategic planning process itself, about teaching and learning, student success, community engagement, and community development, economic development, workforce development, adult education, financial management, technology, and finally, their campuses and facilities. But you'll notice that campuses and facilities are last on the list. And that's because the infrastructure for the college really depends on what the college's mission is and what they hope to accomplish with their program. And so the colleges are going to be submitting their answers to these 50 questions to the chancellor. And the chancellor will share those proposals, or those self-studies really, with the Board of Trustees. And the chancellor and you all as the board will provide feedback to the institutions on their self-analysis. And then that will conclude phase one of the proposal. And if we can go to the next slide, I've given you a couple of samples of those 50 questions. And the first question comes from the area of strategic planning. There are anywhere from three to six questions in each category. And this is one of those questions from the area of strategic planning. The question is, how is the education environment in which the college operates evolving? And how will the college answer the challenges that this evolution brings, including dealing with competitors, both traditional and non-traditional? So that is a very thought-provoking question, thinking about the environment that our colleges are operating in and how rapidly those environments are changing and how they're going to respond to that. So we think these are thought-provoking questions that will allow the colleges to really reflect on how they're serving their communities and how they can do that. A second example from these 50, 50 questions comes from workforce development. This question is, what is the college's plan for expanding opportunities for students to participate in work-based learning? And how will the plan support local business and industry with a skilled workforce? So this question is a little more focused. Nevertheless, it should require that the colleges conduct some self-reflection and really think about what they are doing to meet the needs of local business and industry with a skilled workforce. We can go to the next slide. Phase two of this process, the colleges will actually refine their priorities for their projects and rank those projects so that the chancellor and the board of trustees knows what is at the top of their list for funding. And then they will develop detailed plans for those capital improvement projects. And they will submit those plans in a formal proposal in response to the RFP Phase Two directions. And this will be similar to the way you respond to a grant RFP. It will be very structured, and they will be required to submit a narrative response with attachments and supporting documents. And then the chancellor and the board will collectively review those proposals and make decisions on what proposals should be funded that will have the greatest impact for our students across the state and for our communities across the state. And if we can go to the next slide. We are not asking our colleges to do this without providing some resources. Before we engaged the presidents in this process, we did some research on our own and we collected many resources to support their work. They include reading resources that are articles, handbooks, opinion pieces, blogs, and guidebooks that directly correspond with the areas that they will be considering on their self-analysis. We are also providing them with 10-year industry projection reports compiled by the Division here of ACCS of Research Grants and Development. And these 10-year industry projection reports provide the colleges with customized information, information that is relative to the 60-mile radius around their main campus. So it applies to the industries directly in their service area. It provides them with the large industries by size in terms of employees, the highest-paying industries, the fastest-growing industries, and the industries with the highest location questions. Or in other words, industries that have greater saturation in their market in their service area than in similar areas nationally. And we are also providing them with service area directories that we have developed that provide information on stakeholders in their service area, contact information for businesses and industry, government, other education sectors, nonprofits, just all the stakeholders that could possibly be involved with the college. We're providing information on that and how to contact those organizations to involve them in this process. And all of those resources will be posted on our ACCS website. And if you're interested in taking a look at those resources, you can go to the homepage, scroll to the bottom, and click on the link called Staff Resources. And then you'll see at the top of Staff Resources, you'll see a further link to ACCS Aspire 2030 resources. And you can peruse those resources. They include this PowerPoint presentation as well as the booklet that you were mailed a hard copy of last Friday. Don't know if you've received it yet, but hope you'll take a look at that when you get it. And that booklet includes instructions for responding to the self-analysis and includes the college's 10-year industry projection report. We have also sent all of this information out to the presidents electronically and offered our services here at the system office to help them through this process in any way we can. And so if we'll go to the next slide, you'll see the cover and the table of contents for the ACCS Aspire 2030 Guidebook, which you're receiving in the mail in hard copy and which the colleges received several copies of, as well in hard copy and electronic form. And it starts with the chancellor's memorandum about this initiative, then the request for proposal overview and instructions, the phase-one self-analysis questions, a descriptive table of contents for the electronic resources, a form for them to list their table of contents for the electronic resources, a form for them to list their committee members that are going to be working on this initiative at the college, including those that they've engaged from the community, the timeline for the initiative, a sample article from the electronic resources, and then their 10-year industry projections report. And if we go to the next slide, this is just your chance to ask questions about this initiative. So I'll open it up to questions if you have any.
Dr. Olson, this is Milton. I noticed there was a timeline. Can you just tell me the date for the Phase One response as well as Phase Two response?
Yes. The colleges are supposed to respond to the very first question on the self-analysis, which is about their strategic planning process. They should send something in on that by July 31st, and they'll be sending that to me, and then I'll be compiling them and getting them to the chancellor. In that response, what they will do is they will describe how they have decided to go about this strategic planning process. They'll tell us what committees they have formed and how they expect those committees to function. They will give us their committee listings, which will include the names, the job titles, the organization that the member represents, and what role they expect that person to serve on the committee. So they will be providing evidence to us of broad-based involvement in this process, not only from internal folks, their faculty and staff and administration, but also folks from their community. And so that is the first thing that's due, and that is due on July 31st. So that's coming up fairly soon, and they've already gotten to work on this. They're already forming their committees and inviting people from the community to participate. I'm getting lots of questions on that from the colleges, and we're very excited about it. They're very excited about it and thankful for the opportunity to reflect on themselves and their opportunity to engage their communities more fully than they have been in the past. So that's July 31st. So once they have responded to question number one on strategic planning and submit that, then they will begin work on the other 49 questions. And their narrative responses to those 49 questions, along with any attachments, are due to us here at the system office, to the chancellor, by September the 15th. We do not have any dates past that established yet because that will depend on how quickly the chancellor and you trustees can work through the review of their self-analysis. And at that point, then we will distribute further instructions for completion of Phase Two.
Back on number two of your bullet presentation, I really want to discuss business and industry, not necessarily rely on the regional councils to talk to the business and industries to see what they need. Unfortunately, traveling around the state and talking to business and industries, some of these industries still do not have a clear understanding of what's offered. So it's going to be critical to get the right stakeholders involved on what their needs are. And with ever-changing technology and equipment, what we're doing right now, say for PLCs or Megatronics, may be outdated on what they need based on the equipment and where they're going in the future. So it's critical we get the right stakeholders involved on putting together the needs of local business and industry.
Well, let me add something. We spent with each group in the three different locations, in most cases, in excess of six hours. We had Neil Wade, who many of you will recognize that name, who was kind of one of the early leaders in economic development, and he talked about community development and economic development. One of our main efforts is to, and one of the reasons we're requiring them to tell us who's on their committee, is we want to know. Because our stress has been on, we want the community represented. If someone submitted to me a committee made up of the Regional Planning Board, I would turn it down. Because we're saying you must have direct contact with the people that are going to serve on the committees, and we want to know who that is. That's a little deeper than we've ever gone in that process.
Thank you, Jimmy. As usual, you're on top of it. Thank you all.
Yes, Mr. Smith, and I would add that there are particular questions on their self-analysis that do require them to examine their outreach to business and industry very carefully, asking themselves, you know, what am I doing to reach out to all of the businesses in our area? And really examining those processes and their contacts, and we feel like we are asking them to do exactly what you're talking about.
Thank you all for being ahead of me and on top of it.
Dr. Olson, is there a guide to help the chancellor and the board in our review and evaluation of the various proposals?
We will have a guide, yes. We haven't completed that yet, but we're going to have to have a standard approach. So we make sure that we look at everything and every school with some kind of standard approach.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Look, we're trying to emphasize that we are a community college. Sometimes I think folks have forgotten some of that. But, and in our community, we have to represent every segment of the community. And the only way you know that you're doing that is to be in communication with them. And that's where we're trying to really force people to expand their view of what our service area is, our service responsibility, I might say. We're asking a lot of the presidents, but so much of this they should have already looked at, and many of them have. But we want it in a more formal approach.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much for allowing me to present on Aspire 2030, and I believe you got an electronic copy of this as well. And so if you review that or your hard copy and you have any additional questions, please feel free to let us know.
I've also asked Vicki if she will review another project that we have undertaken. I'm sure you followed the legislation, and when the governor added the executive amendment to the budget bill, which in essence provided $1.9 billion to the governor's office to be used in grants in various categories. One of the items that we have to look at as a system is, are we really providing the proper kinds of technology and upgraded technology to be competitive in today's environment? And the answer to that is no, we're not. So we have to address that, and that's a part of, if we're looking at 2030, we've got to deal with that issue. In an effort to deal with that issue, staff has worked for an extended period of time, and we have submitted an application for funding. And to deal with technology, and hopefully we can succeed in getting the funded grant, the grant, but I've asked Vicki if she will cover this for you as well, so you will be aware of what we are proposing to do. I would tell you that this is all in keeping with the idea of developing an innovation center for the system as a whole to deal with technology, excuse me, I'm sorry, to deal with technology and specifically with distance learning, and do it in a way that we are comfortable, that we are serving the public as we should be doing. So Vicki, if you will, cover this.
Yes. Thank you again, Chairman Thompson and Board of Trustees, for allowing me to present on the ACCS application for the state coronavirus relief fund. Distribution of funds is changing rapidly. We are getting notices every day of amounts that have been submitted for this purpose or that purpose. But there is still a lot that has been unallocated and that we hope we're going to be able to take advantage of. And so we have sent to the Department of Finance our request for funding from this approximately $1.9 billion that was awarded to the state.
Let me stop you just a minute, just so they will understand. This is the first public review that there's been of this. We wanted to make the presentation today so that you would know, and we hope you approve of, because I have already requested a meeting with the governor, the chief of staff, and the finance director, and the director of ADECA, who is involved in this, for us to make the similar kind of presentation, if you feel appropriate that it's appropriate to do that.
Okay. So we will move to the next slide. And of course, this funding was amended from Act 2019-394, the General Fund of Protection Act, Bill 161, which became Alabama Act 2021-99. And in that, there were specific amounts allocated for specific purposes out of the $1.9 billion that was awarded to the state of Alabama. I have highlighted three particular line items there that apply to the Alabama Community College System. Line A for state agencies, there was $300 million or up to $300 million allocated for state agencies for pandemic-related expenditures. Line E for state agencies, equipment and infrastructure for remote instruction or for remote work, excuse me, $53 million. And then finally, line F, technology and infrastructure for remote instruction and learning, $300 million. And those are the pots of money that we anticipated being able to draw from for our requests. And we will look at that next. So if we go to the next slide. From that fund category from line A, we were asking for the system office for $6,546 for expenditures that we have incurred for providing a safe working environment here at the system office. From that line item E, we are asking for $35,214.90 for reimbursement for expenditures related to facilitating remote work. In other words, we sent our staff home to work from home during the initial period of the pandemic. We incurred certain expenses such as laptops, Zoom licenses, VPN licenses, things like that, that would facilitate our working from home. And we feel like we were very conservative with those funds. We got by very inexpensively, for the most part, because we already had a lot of the equipment that we needed to accomplish that work. For example, the division that I work in, all five members of my division already use laptops on a daily basis here at the system office. And so we were able to just transition immediately to working from home with our existing equipment and did not need to execute any funds at all. The bulk of what we are asking for in the coronavirus relief funding, though, is for our colleges and our students. We are asking for reimbursement of expenditures that we want to improve remote instruction and learning statewide, and that is $95,858,000. You can see that the bulk of our request is focused on students. If you'll go to the next slide, we'll put that in context. What we are asking for the system office is a total of $41,755. What we are asking for the colleges and our students is $95,858,000. So 99.96% of what we are requesting is for expenditures that will directly impact students. We can go to the next slide. Just to give you a little detail on what we are asking for for the system office, that $6,546 was for sanitizing services, sanitizing supplies, and personal protection equipment such as masks, masks and gloves. We'll go to the next slide. The $35,214.90 that we're asking for for the system office was for technology purchases such as laptops for employees who did not already have those, VPN licenses which would allow us access to our internal network here at the system office with security, and then Zoom licenses to facilitate the many virtual meetings that we held during that time period as we were working from home and continue to utilize as part of our social distance strategy here at the system office today. And if we go to the next slide, I'll start looking at the bulk of the expenditures that we are asking for, the $98,858,000. This is a summary of what we are asking for, and I will give you a little more detail on each of these four categories as we go along. For technology and software to improve online and hybrid courses, we're asking for approximately $5.5 million. For the ACCS Online Innovation Center, which will include virtual and augmented reality studios and virtual and augmented reality hubs at every college campus, we are asking And then for very needed and very necessary campus technology and network infrastructure upgrades to take us into the next 10 years where we will be challenged to provide more and more instruction electronically, we are asking for $60,375,000. And then we have three major initiatives which we talked about, $1,685,000. We have some goals that we set out when we started looking ahead to what we needed to accomplish what we need to, to respond to the coronavirus pandemic and to carry us into the future, be able to serve our students. We looked at making sure that we can provide quality instruction online. We looked at providing consistency, in other words, every college being able to offer the same quality instruction, and for that to be predictable for students who may move between our college. We looked at improving access and equity for our students, particularly those who live in remote places or who attend small colleges that don't necessarily have the financial resources of some of our larger colleges. And we looked at improving the reliability of our technology and the security of our operations, and achieving all of this with an efficiency that only comes when you can purchase at scale. And so we will look at those four categories with a bit more detail. So if we'll go to the next slide. For the technology software upgrades for online and hybrid courses, the total was $5.5 million, and you can see the broad categories of items that we're looking to fund there. And these involve primarily making sure that everything is common and standardized system-wide, a common learning management system, which is the platform that online courses are posted on, a common online proctoring solution so that students who are taking tests remotely, we can ensure that those really are the students who are enrolled in the class, an online tutoring solution so that students can get help remotely, just like they would have gotten while they were on campus. like they would have gotten while they were on campus, a Quality Matters membership for every college which ensures that all online classes meet certain quality standards, and a video lecture capture tool which will help us improve the delivery of instruction to students so that things are not static, but they are active learning. And we feel that these purchases help us meet the goals of consistency, access, and equity, quality, and efficiency. And we'll go on to the next slide and look at the next category of expenditures. This was for the Innovation Center, ACSF Online Innovation Center. And the total was $28 million. For the basic equipment for the ACSF Online Innovation Center, $3.45 million. For virtual and augmented reality center equipment, a little over $4 million. For the virtual and augmented reality hub at the colleges, related equipment there, a little over $8 million. And then an online innovation center mobile unit which would travel the state. And in addition, virtual computers which would take the place of individual computers in a lab setting, let's say, at a college and be also available to students remotely. This would allow our students to have access to the latest and greatest in terms of power on a computer. This really will result in one savings for our colleges. Let's say, for example, the drafting and tech drafting technology program where computers have to be updated every two or three years because of advances in software. This would allow us to provide that for our colleges without having to upgrade 25 to 50 computers for labs every two or three years. And would provide those resources to students working remotely as well. And we believe that these purchases help us meet the goals of access and equity for all students regardless of their location, regardless of their school's financial resources, and system-wide quality so that all faculty, no matter which college they teach for, have the same cutting-edge resources, whether their delivery is online, hybrid, or face-to-face, and helps us achieve that system-wide efficiency by purchasing in scale, which reduces the cost for all. We'll go to the third category of instruction by going to the next slide. This is our system-wide technology and network upgrades, very important category of expenses here. This would include a local area network refresh for every college, $36.8 million, plus wireless network expansion for every college. That would be expanding the wireless operations into areas that the colleges currently do not serve on their campuses, areas even such as parking lots, where students would be able to access their online courses from their vehicles. Redundant power at $5.75 million. That just ensures that we can continue operations even during times of power outages. And the purchase of Zoom seats and rooms to facilitate the types of interaction that we desire in our online courses, the synchronous visual interaction. And then the next-generation network firewalls at $2.875 million to ensure security of information and the security of our online courses as they are being conducted. And this helps us meet many goals of access, reliability, security, quality, and efficiency. And finally, we'll go to the last slide for these categories, and this was our miscellaneous expenses, approximately $1.15 million we're asking for for a medication aid program, resources. These would be to help us launch the medication aid program, which is very much needed by our nursing homes right now. It would pay for online subscriptions to curriculum and textbooks and give us access to training protocols that have already been tested and proved in other states. It would also provide for us to be able to launch three massive open online courses or MOOCs that would provide statewide access to any student looking to enter college, really even not just our colleges. This would be preparatory software that would, sort of like remedial software, that would enable a student who is not quite ready to do college work to take a reading and writing class, or a mathematics class, or a computer literacy class, for free, designed similar to a remedial class on campus, but delivered online with the appropriate assessment and feedback, just like if they were attending on campus, and totally free for those students. And then it would also pay for every institution to participate in NC Sierra, which facilitates our offering of programs to students across our state borders. And so all of this combined was a little over $98 million to be applied for. And what I hope that you take away from this presentation today about our application is shown on the last slide, first of all, that if we are to receive this funding, then we would have a game-changing situation in terms of technology that we would be able to use for delivering online and hybrid instruction. And it would also impact our face-to-face classes as well. We would have a level of sophistication for our students with technology that we have not seen before. And we would be able to then compete with private business and industry that are trying to get into the training market and the for-profit universities as well. And in submitting this one single application from the system office on behalf of our colleges, we think that we are stronger together. We think we have a better chance of getting this funding and for benefiting all colleges rather than just a select few. And we realize that there are no guarantees that we will receive this funding, but we are going to be working hard. The Chancellor has already mentioned some meetings that he has coming up, and our colleges are going to be joining in petitioning, we hope, for this funding. And we hope that you trustees will join us as well, because we really do believe that this can be a game changer for our institutions and, most importantly, for our students statewide. And that concludes the slides that I had developed for this presentation. And I would like to know if you have any questions for me.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think this, it's my opinion, and I believe a common opinion across the country, that we've done a lot over the last several months in distance learning, but I'm not comfortable with some of that. And I think we're going to find that those students who are deficient probably are going to suffer somewhat. It's our job to do the best possible job that we can do, because I believe in the future that you're going to see more and more technology involved in instruction, other than just face-to-face lecture or instruction. And we are way behind, we're even behind in many instances where the high schools are, because over many years, they've been receiving E-rate funding. So they've been able to do a lot of things with technology if they kept up with it. We're behind, and we've made a good effort, but we're not where we need to be. This, as Vicki said to me, is a game changer. It affects every school. And it would create a system that probably would be, in my judgment, far in advance of any other systems in this surrounding area, and I'm not talking about in-state, other states as well. This is a big ask, but we won't ever get where we need to be unless we ask big, and I'm willing to ask big, and I'm soliciting support. I fully expect every president, and we've reviewed this with the presidents, to sign off and support this, because it treats every school, every one of our centers, the same way. And I just wanted you to understand what we're trying to do. And I'd love to just respond to questions if you have some.
Chancellor, I think this is a great presentation, and Chancellor, let us know how we can help.
I would add, too, the fantastic presentation, certainly where we want to be and whatever we can do to get there as soon as possible. You know, one of the things that we're going to still face is the gaps across the state where there is no Wi-Fi, where there is not very good cell coverage. You know, I would like to see us, if this grant comes through and whatever level it comes through, look for ways to color in the spots in the map where there are no, where there is no 5G or no 4G. You know, I had a situation recently with employees where I had to go buy all of the jet packs, the 4G jet packs that I could buy to send home to people who live in areas in our part of the world where they have no Wi-Fi or have no broadband. They have something very slow, but not anything that they can work with, with the software that we have to use while working at home. And our students are going to be the same way. So, you know, maybe we can buy devices that we can send home and use with them as a part of this fund to, because I think if we sit around and wait for the state to get 5G or Wi-Fi coverage, broadband coverage, and all across the state, we're going to wait a long time. So I think this is a great approach and a great opportunity just to attack the problem and solve it ourselves.
I agree with Blake, and I would actually add that line item to the slide regarding that power pack that Blake had referenced.
Those services are not eligible for funding. We have considered that, and we've looked at opportunities to do that, but that is specifically excluded from page 35.
Well, actually, we participated in a phone call initially with this, and I need to kind of talk about timeline, too. But on the initial phone call, which was conducted by ADECA, a majority of the people that were on it, on the call, were vendors who were trying to solicit money out of this pot for the purpose of trying to expand broadband. And specifically, this money is not for that, and it cannot replace money or budgeted money that was already designed for that purpose. So, but Blake, that is a very valid issue, and we're looking at what we can possibly do. And I would tell you, we literally had instructors or other people from some of our schools who drove out way off the campus into the hills so that they could get the information to the students. And we had a lot of that happening, and had a lot of students drive into the parking lots because we were able to have hotspots there. But we're going to do everything we can to help make it available to everybody that possibly will participate. Now, it's going to be tough in some cases, but I just think we've got to make a big step and try to move forward at a level that will make a big difference. Because this isn't just for cases of pandemic situation, this is for the future.
Right.
And if we're going to be the kind of system we need to be, we've got to be on top of this.
Right. And I would just add, as a point of clarification, I do recognize that, and I actually heard news reports about broadband not being, broadband expansion not qualifying for this funding. But what I'm talking about is not broadband, it's cellular, and it's 5G, and it's something that we can send home with students, a device we send home, they check it out, take it home, bring it back at the end of the semester. You know, they're about $100 a piece, and I have had great success with it. It's a small amount of money to invest, but anyway, maybe we can figure out how to make that work somewhere along the way.
It may be that if we can get this funded this way, then we might have a little money otherwise that would be so restricted.
That's good. That's true. That's true.
Jimmy, this was...
Go ahead.
This was an isolated incident, but I would like the schools to reach out to the mayors of the town and let them know that we're bringing students that can drive up in their cars to use the Wi-Fi on campus. Because I know of one situation before the summer started, the police actually came up and told the students they had to leave, but they were in their car using the school's Wi-Fi to get their studies done.
Okay. Good point. We intend, unless you feel otherwise, we intend to aggressively pursue, and working with the Governor's Office, legislators, all of our presidents, and with your support, I believe we can be successful. I just think we have to do this some way. If it's not this way, then we're going to have to back off and look at some other way. But we're going to chase this as hard as we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm about warning everybody out, I'm afraid.
Chancellor, I think we've been enjoying this. But that's the last of your program, you think?
I think so.
That we've all been good. Our next regular meeting will be, we'll open a work session right after this, go straight into it if there are no objections, and our next Board of Trustees regular meeting will be August 12, 2020 at 10:00 p.m. Any comments from the board? There being, is there motion to adjourn?
Motion for adjournment.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of being adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. We'll go into work session. We've got several fiscal items here at the beginning. Preston Gunnar.
But we have, this is Brian Hems, we have in his stead Sabrina Ruffin with hand, Aaron Dahl Harrison-Sale, and Mike Dunn with Stiefel, and they'll review the five items on the agenda for our work session for refinancing. And this is good news. Our savings on this will be significant, and they'll review those with you. So guys, take it away.
Good morning. This is Mike Dunn. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, good. We appreciate the opportunity, and I'll just hit this kind of from a broad brush standpoint. The bond market is in very good condition. We went through a somewhat turbulent time, middle of March to around the end of April, but since that time, we have recovered. Current interest rates today are very close to the all-time lows that they hit in early March, and these refundings that are before you are transactions we've been looking at for a while, and it is just simply refunding existing debt over the same term as the new bonds would be over the same term as the old bonds. With the lower interest rates we have in the current market today, there are some very significant savings associated with this. So again, bond market is extraordinarily attractive right now. A lot of volume with new deals picking up, with people trying to take advantage of this situation, but very favorable. I'm glad to answer any specific questions you have on any one transaction, if you have anything along those lines, but that's kind of the broad brush. anything along those lines, but that's kind of the broad brush overview.
Let me make a point here, just so you will be clear. On the coastal Alabama, you're looking at three different issues, but you know, we had three different colleges at one time, and so this deals across the board with entire current coastal Alabama.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say that the audit finance committee had an opportunity to review some of this information over the past several weeks. We appreciate Brian, Mike, and everyone, Preston getting this to us. We're, I think, unanimous in our agreement to approach this. We recognize that the chancellor and everyone involved in this has been watching the market, and the time is right now to strike. I think the overall savings were approaching 4.3 million dollars in this refunding, which is significant. And this is something that the committee had asked many times in the past, or just reminded, that hey, we're open anytime these opportunities present themselves, this is one of those, and we, committee wholeheartedly recommends we forward with these.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, Sabrina. If there's nothing else on the refunding of these issues, we'll go to item six.
Thank you, everyone. Y'all have a good day.
You too, Mike.
Thank you, everyone. The last item on the work session this afternoon, number six, is for the 2021 two-year college system and prison education O&M appropriations. You were emailed this morning the most recent details of this. Previously, we had an overview of the total allocation dollar amount. The email that you received this morning lays out the detail of both the earmarks that are stipulated in the act and also a subsequent table that identifies the O&M for both the ETF, or just the ETF O&M and the prison O&M for the colleges. And I'll be happy to, again, this was an increase over last year's funding, all colleges received an increase, and the allocation calculations also includes the performance-based outcomes calculations as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about these. There were no other, there's no other changes to the calculation method this year.
Talking about the allocations for the 2021?
Yes, sir.
Question I have, if you look down to Shelton State, there was $100,000 for distance support in there. The original concept was, it has been transferred to Wallace-Salma. I would like y'all to consider moving that to Wallace-Salma because they've taken over that coverage here.
I'm sorry, you broke up a little bit during that comment, but unfortunately, with the way that the Education Trust Fund Act is written, these are specific dollars appropriated to Shelton State. We can certainly work with Shelton State for perhaps some other funding that's not restricted, but these are restricted specifically to Shelton in the act.
I'd like you to review that because, anyway, just for consideration, I think we need to transfer that to Wallace somehow because I don't believe Shelton's used that 100,000 in the last two years.
We'll certainly look at that.
Or what did it put in there for?
We'll look at that, and I don't know the final detail, but of course, we'll have to allocate the money to Shelton. We'll have to work between the schools to work out some kind of arrangement because I can't just, without any logical reason, I can't just say this is going to go to somebody else as long as it's specified in the appropriation bill. But we'll work with the two schools and see if we can figure out a way to make it work.
Look, I'll echo what Chancellor said, and we'll certainly work with Dr. Mitchell and the system office and do what we need to do based on their instructions.
Northeast planning to define their earmark before the board meeting, or what's the deal there?
Again, this is as defined in the act, there was no definition specified for Northeast And that's been consistent from years past.
Well, I can tell you where it's coming from. There has been the ongoing proposal to develop a technology center on a development area. And the senator that has that item put in the budget calls that his item, and that's where it's supposed to go. But unless the board approves, this school spending the money different ways, then we're going to adhere to what the board policy is. I don't see the project going forward anyway. Blake, you and Crystal will be familiar with the senator in that area who's trying to develop a project.
Yes.
So I'll just reiterate again, if there's an earmark noted in the act, that's exactly how it's transferred to the action item because that's the way the legislature has appropriated the dollars. This is not by the choice of the system office in any way, those allocation, the earmarked allocations are pulled out of all calculated numbers and put specifically as they're written in the ETF Act.
Just a point of clarification on that, I think, Chancellor, this may be what you said, just making sure I understood it correctly. Unless a project up there in Lauderdale County moves forward, these funds will remain earmarked and parked in your budget, is that correct?
Well, actually, it is not written in the law of what it must be spent for. He just maintained this money he had put in the budget for that particular purpose, but there's nothing legally specifying that it has to be spent for that amount. But politically, we have to watch that. But at some point, that money will be at the school, and if nothing goes forward, that money will be available to the school.
Okay.
Did I?
No, I understand that. I just, you know, I would presume that if we're going to engage in a partnership on a project, that project is going to have to come through the board, it's going to have to go through the facilities committee, be approved, and then that funding would be available for such a project that just, it's not going to go happen without our knowledge in a project.
Well, I just think it's a questionable situation to begin with. I'm not saying that it couldn't be made work, I don't know that it could or couldn't, but I have not seen or been able to put my hands on a plan that actually is thought through and says this project will be a successful project.
Right.
Today's market, when you're talking about depending on retail development, I don't think retail development is the same vehicle that it was 20 years ago. And when you talk about a motel, and then you talk about a couple of other things, a farm center with no marketing plan, there's a lot of issues that I wouldn't even approach, say we are on board, until a lot of things are resolved and then we can sit down as a board and talk about it.
Agreed. That's my understanding, and I appreciate the clarification.
Anyone else?
I had a question, Mr. Thompson, on the remaining prison education, the 80%. So that leaves 6.5 million. Will there be a breakdown of that 80%, the allocation of the 80%?
The remaining balance of the prison education funds is specified within the act. A portion has to go to the life tech program, a portion has to go to the, yeah, the CEC program. And then there's also an administrative portion held back as we expand our prison education I'll be happy to provide that breakdown to the board, but it is specified in Education Trust Fund Act.
Why don't you just move on?
I'll email that to you this afternoon, or I'll ask David O'Brien to email.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Chancellor, you have anything else for this work session? Is that covered? That's all on the agenda?
That's it.
Okay. Any comments from the board, anything else?
I'm good.
Anything, we will stand adjourned, and thank you for everyone's participation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.